Notice to the public. Individuals addressing the council should be respectful of others and their choice of words and actions. Honors of property being considered, this evening will be allowed to address the council at the time of the condemnation hearing is called. When the address is called, please come to the podium and state your name and your address. I will now call this condemnation hearing of Turbo on Power Consolidated Government on the 15th day of April 2025. I will do the invocation and the pleasure allegiance. Heavenly Father, on this date, I hope that your Holy Spirit would prick the hearts of those that are here that are assembled, oh God, and those that may be in this position that we are in today. Ask that the kind hearts and benevolent minds, oh God, realize that one man's treasure might be another man's trash. But vice versa, oh God, one man's trash might be another man's treasure. Oh God, we ask that we look at this meeting, oh God, that we have the full understanding that we cannot judge a person even if we walked in their shoes. I ask that this meeting be carried out with the Holy Spirit and the blessings from all in high, oh God, in your darling son, Jesus' name, I pray. Amen. I pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Smith, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Amity, Mr. Champagne, Mr. Hamner, Mr. Babin, Ms. Chauvin, Mr. Trusculler, Mr. Pleasure, Mr. Harding, Mr. Voizen, Mr. Chairman, you have a corn present.
Thank you. A little housekeeping here. I have a letter from Ms. Kim Chauvin, Councilwoman from District Eight. She says, please accept my apology for not being able to attend tonight's special session condemnation hearing. Due to the prior engagement, I have reviewed the agenda. I have made known my concerns. I apologize for any inconvenience by my absence. Thank you very much, Ms. Kim Chauvin. Our first item of business would be item number one. Anyone here? 6653 West Park Avenue.
6653. Okay. Mr. Chairman, Tom Watkins here from South Central Planning and Development Commission. For those who may or may not know, we have been contracted with the parish to assist the building, just planning and zoning with the management of some condemnation services relative to the properties that are going to be coming before the council this evening. And with all that said, and a brief introduction of who I am, the first property up is 6653 West Park Avenue. And counsel, I would respectfully suggest, I'm not sure if you have the hard copies of this, but this particular property was initially recommended for condemnation. If you look at the pictures, you'll see it was in terrible condition. Having said that, recently, I would suggest to you that the property owner has cleaned it up completely. And all of that is there now is a slab. Your packet, I hope, has the picture of the slab itself cleaned. And to that end, we would recommend to the council that this property or this agenda item be closed as not being in violation of any nuisance abatement or condemnation problems.
It has no...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Administration concurs with the recommendation of South Central Planning.
It's been moved by Mr. Champagne that he concur with administration, second by Mr. Amity. Any discussion, members voting machine? Eight zero. Recommendation passed. Item B.
All right, the next property is 7808 Waterfront Drive. This property has also been evaluated by our CBO, the Certified Building Official. Initially, he recommended it be condemned. When the property owners were notified of the condemnation here, they took it upon themselves to come and remove those conditions that caused the nuisance. And to that end, it is recommended that this property also be removed from the item and this agenda item be closed. I would also like to add that the property owners have traveled from Texas to be with us this evening. Oh, and there they are. And I'm sure they might wish to address the council.
Excuse me, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Administration concurs with the recommendation of South Central Planning.
Okay.
And thank you to the property owner for doing that.
Okay.
As per Councilwoman Kim Chauvin, she will concur with the recommendation of staying.
It's motion by Mr. Babin, second by Mr. Champagne that we concur. Ms. Tammy, could you give them, yeah, yes, sir, state your name and address, please?
Mark A. Van, 7808 Waterfront Drive.
Jason A. Van, 7808 Waterfront Drive.
Well, I'm sure that Ms. Chauvin is happy that you guys have actually taken care of this piece of property. She's really adamant about her district and anything you have to say, we're willing to listen.
Just thank you very much for the decision and, yeah, we're planning on rebuilding as soon as possible. Yes, sir.
Okay, then. That's about the end of it. All right. It's been motioned and second. Members voting machine? That's it. Seven zero. Motion passes. And a delay. Eight zero. Next piece of property?
All right, the next piece of property is 216 St. Malo Street. We have somewhat of a situation with regard to this. Service of the order to appear was made, but this is a corporation that owns the property. My appreciation of law, and of course, you have legal counsel here, I would recommend that you perhaps, you know, confirm with her that when you have a legal proceeding being instituted against a corporation, that the agent for the service of process has to be personally served with the action itself. In this particular matter, the two officers of this corporation are a husband, well, we believe they're a husband and wife, a man and a woman. And service was made on one of the officers of the corporation, but not on the agent for service of process. So we have an issue in my mind with respect to proper service, which may otherwise invalidate any ruling that the council comes to relative to this piece of property on condemnation. Having said that, I certainly defer to parish's counsel. Oh, I apologize. Well, go ahead.
Yeah, we agree with what Mr. Tom says about this. We certainly would like to have proper service before we condemn any buildings, and he's correct. The agent for service of process for the corporation is the correct party to serve. So if we don't have that, then we probably should continue it, is what I would recommend.
That said, it would appear that...
The agent for service of process is here?
Yes, sir.
He is here. So he showed up at the hearing, and we can proceed.
Yeah, okay. State your name and address, sir.
My name is Ramon Hodge, 327 Lakewood, but the address is 216 St. Malo.
So now that we have service, we would recommend that the council have this property condemned and that in accordance with the normal procedure, that the property owner be given 30 days to repair or demolish the structure based on the report of our Certified Building Official and reports prior to that, and considering that the pictures being reviewed by y'all this evening.
Mr. Pleasure.
Well, Mr. Pulaski, he's got his...
Okay. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Administration concurs with the recommendation of South Central Planning.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Pleasure.
Okay, I spoke with Mr. Hodge and his folks on the other day, and I'd like to make a motion that we keep it condemned, but extend it for 90 days, give them an opportunity to make some headway there, and then we'll relook at it then.
It's moved by Mr. Pledges, second by Mr. Trusculler, that we extend for 90 days. Condemned, but extend for 90 days. Any discussion other than that? Members voting machine? It passed eight zero. Anything else you have to say, sir?
No, sir.
Well, thank you very much, then.
Okay. Proceed, sir. Okay. Next property on the agenda is 104 Plant Road. Very, very interesting situation here. What I would like to do first, though, is to show the council that this is a property where we do not have service on the owners. We don't have a return. That said, I don't think this is a, oh, they're here. Okay. So there are some representatives that have arrived on behalf of the owner. We will say this as well, that this afternoon, yesterday, I'm sorry, yesterday evening, I can't remember if it was today, maybe, that we, it was yesterday, we got notified that a action in the federal district court for the Eastern District of Louisiana was filed, I suspect by the representatives of the property owner. In a nutshell, they're asking for injunctive relief from what I can ascertain from what was filed. It was filed pro se, in the sense that it was filed by the property owners themselves. They do not have legal counsel, at least as of this point. The, it's difficult to determine from a reading of the complaint what exactly they are asking for, but reading between the lines, it simply appears that they're asking the federal court to intervene and provide injunctive relief. Having said that, there is no injunctive relief order that has been issued by any court whatsoever relative to this piece of property. My two cents is that there being no order by any judicial authority enjoining the movement of this case forward, that it would be proper to have the hearing on condemnation. And my recommendation is to do that, to have it condemned, but the council may wish to, you know, extend it to whatever date they feel it would be appropriate. And I yield the floor to the council for the parish.
Counsel, like Mr. Tom said, a lawsuit was filed yesterday in the Eastern District by the Scarborough family, Reverend Scarborough. Like Mr. Tom said, we're not exactly sure what was being asked for in the petition. It was handwritten. No injunction has been ordered by the court yet, and I suspect that we will try to get the lawsuit dismissed will be the next steps for us. Having said that, there would be no legal impediment to moving forward with the condemnation today. However, I spoke with Michelle today, and she said that if the council would like to continue it and wait for the litigation process to move forward, to see what happens with that, that she would recommend continuing for six months. But that's the council's decision, and if you'd like to move forward today, like I said, there's certainly, at this moment, no reason that it could not be condemned.
Yes, and before Mr. Pleasure speaks, I just found this out within the last hour myself also. So I don't know his information that he's going to have, but then, Mr. Pleasure?
My question to you guys, or to council, would be, you said a lawsuit was filed yesterday pertaining to the 104 Plant Road, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So that means some sort of litigation or something is going on, but we don't know what it is because it was handwritten, or I just want to be sure that I understand.
So this is what we, and Tom, you can step in in a second and kind of add to what I'm saying, is that Mr. or the Reverend Scarborough is a consular official of some sort. We have not confirmed that status with any department, you know, but there was a picture of a license plate attached, I guess, that said consular official. And I'm assuming that what they're asking is that because he's a consular official, we should not condemn this property. Now, just for, you know, everyone's edification, consular officials are entitled to some immunities under statutes, federal statutes, but from my research, I don't think that condemnation hearings for property such as this would fall under that. Now, again, that's not exactly what was asked for in the petition, but I think that's where it was headed. I think that's, but maybe the representatives...
That's going to be my next recommendation, be kind of all the apples in the barrel, so we can actually come up with a figure.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Yes.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is...
You can pull it down.
Okay.
There you go.
This is my sister. I'm going to speak in behalf of her and my brother. We filed this...
Name and address for the record.
My name is Carolyn Smith. I'm a party of 104 Plant Road, okay? My question is to you, condemnation is eminent domain, and that falls under the Fifth Amendment. That's a taking clause. Okay, but let me finish. She said she didn't know what a consular tag is. That's the international law. He's protected on the Fifth, Sixth, and the Third Constitution, on the Constitution. So she know what the consular tag is because I talked to Mr. Watkins. I told him before we came, I asked, did we need to bring that license plate so you can confirm? He, they told me at the state trooper office that it was legit and someone would be here, a police officer would be here to know what that tag, that license plate is. It's international law. So if you don't know what international law is, please look it up.
Okay, if I can ask you, ma'am, I'm not aware, I don't know what, I'm not a legal scholar in that sense, but I would ask you, what's the intent here with 104 Plant Road?
Litigation. She said litigation.
Okay, so it's under litigation.
And due process of law cannot, we got to go through due process of law. So that's what, if she's, she's an attorney right here? Is this still attorney?
Yes, she is.
Okay, well, she know what due process.
Okay, well, this is what I want to suggest, and maybe you guys can help me out on this. I want to make a motion that we figure out what's going on here first before we, you know, condemn it. I don't know what the young lady is speaking of. I don't, I'm kind of confused. I don't want to make a decision, and then it comes back on us. But I'd say we need to investigate it for sure. So make a motion to extend. Make a motion to extend. Yeah, go ahead, Claude.
I didn't even think about hitting my mic.
It's fine. Go ahead, Claude.
It worked half time.
Just on a personal note, what is y'all intent with the property? I know you're bringing it to litigation, but what do y'all want to do with the property?
Oh, it's in process right now. We planning on fixing it.
You're going to fix it?
Yes.
That's what we want to.
Yeah, but you said condemnation. I know what condemnation is, eminent domain, and I want to know, do you need it? As for highway, you can only take it for a highway or something like that. Fifth Amendment.
Well, I'm like the rest of these fellows. I'm not an attorney, you know.
Okay, well, Mr. Watkins is, so he knows exactly what I'm talking about. And it's under, it's under international law. Counselor, counsel, look up the consular tag, and you'll see we got a legit tag.
But y'all are planning to fix it?
Yes.
And you have a timeline on that, by any chance?
Whenever we go through the court, let the court, we're going to play it through the court, to let you know, we are legit. She don't know what it is, so we're going to let the court fight it out in the court.
Well, I can save you some money as attorney fees if you just say you fixing it.
Oh, we have an attorney, United States Attorney General come in for us.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, we're not done yet? No, ma'am. No, ma'am. Just to make sure that we're clear, you mentioned license plate and all that. I mean, that's kind of confusing for me, and I'm sure the rest of us, okay? You plan to fix it, correct?
Yes.
How long has the property been in the state?
Sir, it's an IDA. We've been out of state for a while, and we back in town now. So this, and the only way we can get it done, when you sent that notice to her for eminent domain, it was right up my head. I knew what to say. Told her I was coming with her. This is my sister. I'm not her markpiece, but I speak for the whole family.
Okay, what's your relation to the family, ma'am?
My sister.
That's your sister's property? Okay, Mr. Pulaski, you wanted to add something?
Yes, thank you. So the file has a 21 number to it indicating it was open, the file was opened in 2021, but the first inspection date was April 20th of 2022, I presume, due to IDA, the delay in that timeframe. Just to clear a few things up, the parish is not interested in acquiring this property. That's the last thing we want. What we want is the property cleaned up, either the structure demolished or repaired to, you know, to where it can be issued a certificate of occupancy so it's habitable and meets all the code requirements. We want the property back in commerce. This does no good for the parish to acquire these rights. All we end up doing is cutting the grass. So we're not interested in eminent domain or a taking or any of those things. I think what would be beneficial, if your intent is to fix it up, by all means, apply for a building permit to begin the repairs. I think that says more than anything what your intention is.
Okay, we're not going to, we're not going to take this case up in here.
There we go. So I think my recommendation would be to concur with the parish attorney in that we continue this item to July 15th, 2025, which is the date that we were talking about before this meeting started, about when we would have the next round of condemnations, to give time for our parish attorney's office to figure out what's going on with what was filed in the court system and so we can get some clarification.
All right. I make a motion to concur with the administration?
Okay. It's a motion by Mr. Pleasure, second by Mr. Trusculler, that he concur with administration. I have two lights. Ms. Stewart, okay, you're off. Claude?
Yes, okay. I just have a question. Can we condemn pending any court orders or litigation that may come up?
You can, but...
No, you can't. No, you cannot.
We did that already. We're done. We've moved on. We're on the next one now. We're done. Change July 15th.
Yeah, he had a light on, and that's why we're doing it. And that's what the deal is. And let's be candid about this. This is giving us an opportunity by July 15th to actually iron this matter out. And that's what we're going to do right here, concurring with the administration with the motion by Mr. Pleasure, second by Mr. Trusculler. Any other discussion? Members voting machine? I must say that the motion did pass eight zero. Ma'am, I think originally, when Mr. Watkins said he could not get in contact with you guys, hopefully before you leave, you can actually contact, leave your number with Mr. Watkins so they can have some communication with you if you desire to. Other than that, you will be communicated with by the same manner that you were communicated with.
Through the attorney. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And I wanted to say, you putting the houses up there, that's not the state is in now. So that's false. You know that's false, right?
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next one.
Okay. Next property is 7802 Main Street. This property initially was recommended for a finding of condemnation, but since the notice to the property owners were received, that the property owner has taken sufficient steps to remedy the defects, rendering it a property that should not be condemned. In your packet, although the pictures don't show it on your screen, there are some pictures that reflect the current state of the building, and it's our recommendation that it not be condemned and should be closed.
Administration concurs with that recommendation.
Moved by Mr. Champagne, second by Mr. Amity, that we concur with the administration. Any discussion? It's light.
I don't need to talk if y'all didn't condemn it. I just came here to make sure I wasn't going to do that.
Okay, then. Well, yeah. Members voting machine? Eight zero. Thank you very much, sir. Next one.
The next property is 329 Leveron Street. We have a service issue on this particular matter. Service was not able to be made against the property owners, and it's our recommendation that this matter be rescheduled. And, oh, sorry about that. Owner's here. So we, our CBO has recommended that this property be condemned, and based on the report and the pictures and findings, we recommend condemnation and that the property owner, if condemned, have until May 15th, 2025, to repair or demolish the structure.
Administration concurs with the recommendation of South Central Planning.
At this time, this is actually in my area. Well, state your name and address, sir?
Dwayne Richard, 7709 Main Street.
All right. In reference to this property, you have an opportunity to speak on your own behalf.
Well, the house don't look like that right now. Man, I got pictures with them if y'all want to see it, but the tin's back on the roof. And plus, it has a double roof on the house. There's a cedar shingle roof underneath there. I mean, all the tin can come off. Still got a roof on the house, but the tin's back on. I mean, but this house is just mainly cosmetic. I mean, structurally, it's sound. I've been having people live in it since 2007, and right now I got somebody living in it right now. So it's not a vacant house.
Yes. Ms. Stewart, do you have any record of this piece of property?
Do I have record of the property? All I have right now is the information that South Central Planning has. So I haven't provided any updated information other than what they have.
Okay. Excuse me, sir. Now, do you have a permit to do the work that you said that you're going to do, or have you had a permit to do the work?
Not for that little bit of work. I mean, I put five pieces of tin back on the roof. I mean, I mean, the rest is cosmetic. I mean, just because it don't look pretty. I mean, I mean, they take pictures of a house, and then they, how you going to determine if, you know, and it said, in the deal, it says that the house was in dangerous condition, which endangers the public welfare. So, I mean, what's the definition? I mean...
Well, it's difficult for where I'm at, but the thing is, part of cosmetic is their job. And it starts out with nuisance and abatement. And that nuisance and abatement and the conditions that's involved around there, that's the issue that's here. Whether it's cosmetic or structure, anything of that particular nature, it is a nuisance. And when it becomes a nuisance according to our laws, then we take action upon it. It happens to be in my district, and speaking again, very openly about it, I recall an issue with that same piece of property that we have. Again, we're looking at the fact that for anything work that you're going to do in Turbo on Parish, you need a permit.
Yeah.
And generally, when we have an opportunity... And generally when we have, um, an opportunity, uh, to do that, it, it creates intent. So we're not pushing the can down the road. So me, myself, I can't make the motion, but I, I have the sentiments of, uh, administration.
What else, what do I have to do to, to satisfy the parish? I mean, what else I have to do to the house?
It's on the paper.
Huh?
The conditions of the, uh, of, of the structure is, is spelled out in the paper that you have.
What you mean spelled out? I mean, it's, it said dilapidated, dangerous structure, then when you get to the first paragraph, it, it says that, uh, to be in a dilapidated, dangerous condition which endangers the public welfare.
So what we're gonna do here is that, Mr. Babbin?
I'm trying to understand, you know, I mean, I mean, that, it, I mean, is that a fact or is it somebody's opinion?
What we gonna do here? Uh, I have a colleague, he's gonna make a recommendation, uh, through a motion, and, um, and let him go ahead with that.
Yeah, what, what we're gonna do, we're gonna concur with administration, we're gonna condemn it, but we're giving you ninety days. Which, if you have, if you plan to do more work on this, my recommendation to you is to go to the planning office and get a permit and let them know exactly what you're gonna be doing, so you have ninety days to clear all this up. It's not gonna be torn down, but the process we're taking is we're gonna condemn it. So now, the onus is on you to take care of the responsibility, that which you wanna do, okay? I grew up on Leveron Street, so I know exactly where this house is.
I know where you grew up at.
Yeah, so, in any event, we're gonna, uh, my motion is to condemn and to give him ninety days.
Uh, motion by Mr. Babbin, second by Mr. Pleasure to condemn and extend for ninety days, uh, Mr. Trust Clair?
Yeah, I have a question, uh. The man, the man just said that he, he replaced the tin that was missing, and he don't know what else is, is causing.
The storm did that, that.
Is, is part of condemnation. So my recommendation would be to, somebody from, from South Central Planning or Planning and Zoning needs to go out there and tell a man what needs to be done to get it back in, in, into compliance so that he can, he, he don't even know what he needs a permit for. He just said he fixed the roof, and if he, if he, if, that's all it was in violation, well, it's done. We don't have the pictures of it here, so I, I can't prove it, but if he did.
I got pictures if you wanna see them.
It's irrelevant at this point, we're gonna extend it, but what I'm saying is, if, if there's any other discrepancies and you don't know about them, you're not gonna get them fixed, so it, it, we wasting our time. So somebody needs to let you know what needs to be done.
So I, 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 I will say this on behalf of South Central Planning, if the, uh, property owner would like to, this is our, our building inspector, uh, and we'll be happy to work with him, uh, uh, to satisfy all of the legal requirements necessary for him to, to pass, you know, an inspection.
But this has come up several times where people don't realize what, what repairs need to be done when they get these, these condemnations.
They get notification on that, in the letter they get listed what.
Wait, wait, uh, put your light on so everybody can hear it, please.
No, I was just making mention that when we send out notifications to these owners, they do get in the letter specifics as to what the violations are.
So what that man read is just now is not what he got?
I'm sorry?
What he read to be just now is not what he got?
He, he received what?
Did he get something else besides that, that he's not reading to us?
I'm not sure what he's reading, I, I don't know.
He just read, he just read his letter.
Latest content, like the latest inspection report. I think what Ms. Stewart is saying is, when this process is initiated upfront, they've given a long list of things that they need to comply with in order for that structure to not be in violation.
Okay, well, I, I mean, that's not what he read to us, so.
No, yeah, he read the inspection report, there's a separate document when the process just starts out that shows all of the things that he needs to fix.
Well, if he got that, well then, I'm okay, thank you.
That letter was sent on November, it was dated November seventh, twenty twenty-two, and it gives a several steps
Three years.
Um, about what needs to happen. Yeah.
Yeah, um, members vote your machine. Eight zero, motion passed, before you leave, sir. Uh, get with someone and see if we can iron this out, 'cause they're gonna give you the information that you need. Hopefully, uh, everything you need is just like Mr. Babbin said, you have to get a permit to do something. And, uh, generally when it comes up here, for everyone else that's out there, when you get a permit, it shows intent up here. And it actually puts us in a position where we can see where you guys have good intent to do good. And that's all we're looking for out here, we don't want your property.
I had intent without a permit, like I said, is, is not fixed, I mean, what else, I mean, what else I need to do?
So if you can contact, uh, the people that contact you, it would be all right.
No problem.
Right. Thank you, sir.
That's it?
Yeah, before you leave.
No, no, not, not to him, no, no, not to him, I, I have.
All right, go ahead.
Normally, uh, normally when we go through our inspection process, the planning and zoning, the pictures that we have are dated from the date that they take the picture, okay? It would be helpful for us up here to see that, to see that, to see the date on the picture that's corresponds with the pictures that we have right here. That, this is not the first gentleman that comes to us and says, I have pictures and they're different, okay? And, and, I, I'm not saying anybody's right or wrong here. We sit up here as a jury, so we wanna have as much information as possible for us to make the best decision. It's not our intention to take somebody's property, that's not what we trying to do. We don't wanna tear down things in Turbo Parish, we wanna make them look better, and that's what we trying to do, and make them more habitable. So, again, in the future, if, if the dates were put on these pictures, I think it would help us out a lot, okay? Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Pleasure?
No, I'm good. And, and, and from, from the chair also is that. Yeah, no. And it, from the chair also, this is our first time, because we have an agreement, we usually, uh, handle things through our, uh, planning, zoning, nuisance, abatement, and we ironing out the kinks. So, you know, I mean, if any apology, uh, uh, is to be made, is, is apology coming from me, and, and hopefully the, the job that we doing tonight will actually smooth out as we go on down the line. Okay, next item, please.
The next item on the agenda is two six zero seven Larry Street. This property is a ad hoc, oh, we got representatives, okay? This property, uh, and with the inspection report of our certified building official and, uh, and the pictures shown, uh, we recommend that, that this property be condemned, that the property owners be given thirty days to repair or demolish the structures. If, if it's, if it's prudent for the council, I would show that this, uh, this property has been on, you know, under consideration since May of two thousand and twenty-one. And, uh, anyway, so we're here today, uh, with, you know, with the current conditions of the property, and again, we recommend condemnation.
Chris?
Staff concurs, uh, administration concurs with South Central Planning's recommendation.
Mr. Pleasure? Uh, okay, uh, state your name and address, please?
Tanisha Allen, two nineteen Howard Avenue, Homer, Louisiana, seven oh three six three.
Okay, yes ma'am, what's your position in reference to?
We fine with it.
You fine with it?
Yeah.
Motion concur with administration?
For the record, I just would like to s, show the council that this, uh, this proceeding was, uh, sent to ad hoc attorney, Ms. Courtney Alcock, uh, to handle as we were unaware of, uh, the location of the property owner, so this is an ad hoc, uh, uh, matter. Uh, obviously she did a good job in tracking down the owners, 'cause they showed up here today, so, but it is an ad hoc council appointment.
Go ahead, Ms. Courtney.
Well, actually, I was appointed and, uh, did the usual procedures that I, uh, ran an ad and did some research and sent out some certified letters and, uh, was able to make contact. They actually contacted me in March and said that they didn't have any opposition to the condemnation.
Who's the registered owner, Ms. Um, just curious?
It's in the state.
It's in the state, right? That's a thought, okay. All right, motion concur with the administration?
Uh, uh, motion, uh, by Mr. Um, Pleasure and second by Mr. Babbin to concur, uh, with administration, uh, members vote your machine? Eight zero. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Next item, please?
All right, the next property is one sixty-seven Jennings Lane. Uh, this is, uh, an ad hoc, uh, appointment matter, uh, Ms. Courtney Alcock is the attorney ad hoc. All right, uh, and, uh, me?
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, it is the recommendation of South Central Planning that, uh, in conjunction with the, the evidence presented to the council and the, uh, report of our certified building official, that this property be considered condemned and, uh, and that the property owner be given thirty days until May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five to repair or demolish the structure.
Yes, sir, put your hand to the side.
First of all, obedient to the Trinity, to the Father, to the Son, to the Holy Spirit, to the council, ladies and gentlemen of the council board. My name is Cornelius Walla III, twenty-seven twenty, uh, Fort Savannah Road. And I have, uh, my old grandma's house, I'd like to redo this house and, uh, I can get it like I want it. I wanna be one of the best rental people in Turbo Parish. I don't want it to be any kind of waste, so I need some work done to it. I've been, uh, down there, cut some trees, the stone knocked down some trees, I've been down there doing that. But I'm on, on this thing by myself, so that really don't bother me by being by myself on it. It's just that I'm trying to need some time to try to get it all straight. And I said before, I, I would like to be one of the best rental people in Turbo Parish.
Uh, Mr. Wazan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for coming, Mr. Cornelius. Uh, what we gonna do for you? We gonna condemn it. We gonna give you ninety days.
Okay.
I wanna be clear, if you don't get a permit and you don't make repairs within ninety days, it's gonna be condemned after that, you understand?
Yeah.
Okay, sir, I just wanna be clear, so we gonna give you a little extra time, and I'm going against better judgment by doing it. I want you to be clear, 'cause you know how long this thing's been like that, right? Okay, so ninety days, and that's it.
Motion by Mr. Uh, Wazan to, uh, condemn, extend for ninety days, second by Mr. Trust Clair? Any discussion, members vote your machine? Thank you, sir.
That's it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Next item?
Uh, next item is sixty-one eighty-eight Highway fifty-six. Uh, this is an ad hoc appointment matter.
Yeah.
Would appear the owner is here, um, uh, I would show the council that this matter was initiated in June of two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, various inspections have been performed, uh, the latest inspection, update inspection by our certified building official, uh, suggests that, uh, this property should be condemned and that the owner be given thirty days until May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five to repair or demolish the structure.
Chris?
Staff, or administration concurs with the recommendation of South Central Planning.
Uh, yes, ma'am, uh, state your name and address?
Uh, Shalee A Bear, I am, uh, it was my grandmother's property at sixty-one eighty-eight Highway fifty-six in Chauvin. Um, we would like the opportunity to have the extension, to have the demo done ourself. I was only aware of the nuisance of the grass, and then we got that taken, well, my parents got it taken care of. Um, as for the condemnation, I just learned about it and I would like the opportunity. My husband's a contractor, let us, give me a little bit more time before we condemn. It's my grandma's property, it's been like that since Ida. My parents also in Coquetry with damage to their home, my dad's a crapper. Their hands are tied, I wanna try to help them, but I need more, I need a little bit more time.
Okay, after speaking with Ms. Chauvin, who is the, the council person for that area, she wants to condemn it but give you ninety days.
That's fine.
And like we've said before, you need to get proper permitting.
Right.
And, and within those ninety days, if you show that it's, it, you've done substantial work, then it can come off of it, okay?
My mom was also told that she would not be issued a permit, so how do we go about that? Someone, uh, named Ms. Brown told her that.
Well, I, I know nothing about, that's the permitting department, I would call Mr. Chris Pulaski or Ms. Camilla Brown, I, I, or Ms. Deion Stewart in that office.
So I, I'm gonna try.
Well, but again, after this tonight, okay, we condemning it but giving you ninety days, and, and everyone in that department now knows that y'all wanna do some work with it, so again, it's in your, the ball's in your court, okay?
And I also wanted to ask about what happens if it is condemned? Does the state have it then, or no?
No, no.
I'm, we're gonna try, but I just wanted things to be a little more clear.
Is if we condemn it and you don't do anything to it, at that particular point, it has to come down. We either gonna take it down as a parish, which costs more than if you take it down as an individual.
That's why I want to.
Correct, so, uh, if your intent is to rebuild it, or to, you know, to, to freshen it up, so to speak.
Clear, we'd wanna just clear the lot, that's what we want to do.
Then you got ninety days to clear the lot, and it would be a lot cheaper if you do it, but again, you need a permit for that as well, okay? Mr. Pulaski?
Thank you, uh, just like to clarify, so what I think happened is Ms. Brown, when speaking with the property owner, had indicated that the order to appear letter she had already received, there was simply not enough time between time when she contacted Ms. Brown to, tonight, to have a permit issued. You are more than welcome to go to the permit office or to go online, uh, to apply for and get that permit, um, seeing as you have ninety days, that's obviously.
Yeah, we would've had it
Okay.
for now, but, okay, thank you.
All right.
That's all we needed.
Uh, all right, now, uh, Ms. Amadi, you have something to say?
Yeah, I wanna go off of what Chris was saying, I, I had a similar problem, and they wouldn't issue the permit until I let them know that in this meeting I was gonna give an extension. So that might've been what she was encountering. Um, it's just a timing thing, but.
I also wanted to bring up something, there is a pile on the left backside, and my mom was given a lot of trouble about that pile until it was found out that it was a neighbor's, and then it was never mentioned again. So I just wanna bring that up, that pile on the left backside's not ours.
The pile is still there?
Yes, it's still there, but there's no pictures of it anymore, my mom has the picture.
Okay, Mr. Trust Clair?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, we can go ahead, well, I wanna speak out there, out there.
Okay, uh, right now we have a motion by Mr. Babbin to, uh, condemn and extend for ninety days. Need a second? All right, uh, second by Mr. Amadi, uh, members vote your machine? Eight zero, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Trust Clair?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Chair. Uh, Camilla, Chris, Watkins, whoever. On these, on these, uh, you done, you can go.
Oh, okay, thank you, thank you, sir.
Um, every time that, you know, y'all put, y'all put a picture up, this one shows inspection date one seven twenty-five. Was that the last time somebody went to this, this site?
No, sir.
So why, why we don't have the current inspection date on, on these pictures?
So, these pictures were sent to you when the say again? So, yeah, uh, there are updated pictures, uh, these were pictures that were sent when it was initially scheduled in, in March, these, these matters. They, the latest ones, when they were submitted, were not attached to that executive summary.
If we're gonna sit up here and have to make recommendations and make judgments on these properties, we need to have the latest updated information that we can get. I mean, we just had this guy earlier, the, the man before, now, I'm looking at this picture, I see inspection date, you telling me that's not the current inspection date? So, I mean, if we gonna have to, you know, we dealing with people's property and people's, you know, sentimental properties, uh, estates and, and things that mean something to some people. You know, to me and to most of us, it don't mean anything, but if we can't have the, the right information, we don't even have the, uh, the property owners' names on none of the paperwork we have here. I mean, we used to. I mean, we used to have, before we started this situ, this, uh, setting, we had, we had, uh, uh, who owned the property, the location of property, and we had the latest pictures presented to us over here at the council. So I think if we're gonna do, you know, if we will continue doing this, this way, we need to get the latest information on the night that we do these things, and we ought to have all the information available to us that we were accustom to having before. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Pleasure?
Yeah, well, that's, I was gonna, I want to add to that too as well. I noticed we had a couple instances here where, um, we, the, the, the notifications, I guess, weren't gotten or sent out, or we were unable to, you know, um, contact the folks, but they were actually here, so that's another note. If we can try and make sure that we, um.
So, Mr. Pleasure, what happens there is most of the people that are showing up, so everybody has to be served, uh, via certified mail, and what happens is, we never get, oftentimes, we don't get the green cards back, and the postal services, uh, uh, portal doesn't reflect that it has been served either. And so, when they show up, it, it's, it's news to us as well. And additionally, uh, for those matters where an attorney ad hoc has been, Ms. Alcock's been appointed, uh, she takes out ads and, and in the newspapers, and ultimately, you know, people will report it and, and the owners will get a hold of her. So, um, from a notice perspective, you know, all we can do is send it out certified mail, and if we don't get the green cards back, you know, and they show up, it's, it's just, I don't know how else to do it. There is no other way else to do it.
Okay.
And, and, and I will say, Mr. Trust Clair, uh, I, I understand what you're saying, and, uh, that problem will be remedied, and it will not happen again.
Mr. Babbin? Yeah, I, I just wanted to concur with Steve and, and Brian on this, because we have to sit up here as judge, jury, and executioner, okay, so to speak, we want the most up-to-date information possible, because like Steve said, this is people's lives and, and their homes. And I'm not saying that you're not doing a good job. These, this, the, the work is good. If we could just mirror what, I mean, Steve and I have been over here for nine years, okay, so we've been doing this a long time, so we're in that particular groove, so to speak. So, if we can better coordinate the way we normally do it through, uh, Dion's office and, and planning and zoning, it would help us out tremendously, because it's never our intention to take somebody's property or condemn somebody's property, if in fact it can be rehabilitated. So, uh, again, I, we all on the same page here.
Yeah, and from, from staff and administration, we'll work with South Central Planning, tighten this up.
Right.
Because these, these were inspected, most of the, I'm following along, and most of them were inspected on the tenth of April.
I, I don't think anyone is, one of us up here want to assume that we did anything wrong tonight, because we did not, okay? We, we gave, we did, we, we, we had to do with the information, uh, the up-to-date information that we had and your recommendation. So I think we're, we're fine. Thank you. And I have the same sentiments. Uh, I think, uh, we even had the documents, we have our backup along with the pictures the last time they were visited. Uh, we can go through the history, uh, when they first were contacted, how many times they were contacted, and those things like that. So, I think even within the contract, I'm not looking into the contract or anything like that, but telling everyone here that, you know, I mean, hopefully, y'all, you guys can get it all together, and we can move smoothly, uh, from this point on. Thank you very much. Uh, next item would be Jay, right?
Uh, Jay, eighty-seven.
Eight zero.
Eight seven, eight oh seven, Highway fifty-five. Um, I will tell you that the, it, this initial inspection of this property was April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, since that date, uh, numerous inspections have taken place. The last inspection, uh, April tenth, April, April tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, it shows that, uh, this property is still in a condemnable state, and, uh, South Central Planning recommends that the council, uh, condemns property and give the property owner thirty days until May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five to repair or demolish the structure.
Chris?
Uh, staff concurs with recommendation of South Central Planning.
Oh, state your name and address, sir?
Jean Gaspail, one thirty-seven LaCombe Drive. Uh, purchased this property last year, and I'm currently, I have, uh, plans to renovate and restore the property. Obviously, like everybody else said, these pictures are not up to date. Since then, I've cleaned and secured the site. Uh, I'm currently working with Energy to get the temporary pole hooked up. I got the permit in November, and hopefully, I'll get some power soon. Once I get that meter number issued, I could get a permit for renovating the, uh, the home. I did have it evaluated by several contractors, so I'm just currently waiting on the essential utilities, then I can move forward, get my permit to renovate the home.
Mr. Trust Clair?
Okay, so you said you have obtained a permit?
I got a temporary, uh, pole permit. I'm trying to get power and water. Once I get the meter number, then I could get the permit for renovating the home.
Okay, so once you get it, once you get the meter, you gonna start the, uh, well, you gonna have to get a, a permit for reconstruction?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And you hadn't applied for that yet?
No, I'm waiting to get the meter number. I can't file for the, uh, permit until I have a meter number.
Okay, well, I'm, uh, I'm gonna make a motion that we extend to the next condemnation hearing.
Uh, uh, motion by, uh, Mr. Uh, Trust Clair, and second by Mr. Amadi, that we extend to the next condemnation hearing. Wish that date would be?
July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Um, members vote your machine.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just gonna say something too. So you got till July, and if, if you hadn't got the permits, or it's gonna be condemned, we're gonna condemn it at that meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
So right now, I'm at the mercy of Energy. Uh, like I said, I got the permit in November of last year, and Energy, last update I received is they're working with DOT to get approvals from the, the, uh, power across the highway or whatnot.
And that's why I extended it, because I, you know, I deal with Energy every day.
Hmm. Yeah, and Mr., and Mr. Trust Clair, uh, he's, uh, he's representing that area, and then that's, uh, un, extending it until the next condemnation hearing. So you're gonna come back up here again, then we can actually vote then to condemn it or extend it.
You'll probably get another letter if you don't have anything improvements to get to go, you'll get another letter, you have to come back to another condemnation hearing.
Okay, so once I do apply for the permit, I should be wiped off this list, right?
You can't just get a permit, yeah.
Oh, no doubt, no doubt.
Yeah.
So, well, you got it till July.
Okay.
Thank you.
If it was on LaCombe Lane, it would be sleeky, you'd have the permit already.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh.
I wish, it's monopoly with, uh, Energy.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next item. Are we did vote? Uh, uh, members vote your machine, I have my mind already set. Seven, seven zero, Clyde, you here? Oh, uh, no, uh, Clayton's not here, okay. Uh, seven zero, motion passed. Uh, where are we? Um, K, huh?
Item K, uh, twenty-nine thirty-one, Highway three eleven. Uh, we have a service issue on this matter. Uh, service would not be able to be made, like, on the property owner. We don't have the green card back, and, uh, the US Postal website s- shows that it's still, it has not been served. So, it is our recommendation that this matter be rescheduled, that an attorney ad hoc be appointed to represent the interests of the absentee owner.
Staff concurs.
Someone can make the motion.
Motion to concur with administration.
Motion. Motion by Mr. Pleasure, second by Mr. Hamner, uh, that we concur with administration.
True.
Members voting. Seven zero. That's no, that's no longer my district. Yeah, members vote your machine? Okay, yeah, seven zero, okay. Brianna, in and out. That's nowhere near District One either. Um, L, uh, sir?
Yes, sir, uh.
But before we go any further, thi- this is another situation that we, we, we run into, okay? We had redistricting two years ago, all right? We need to use the, the latest and greatest GIS mapping, okay? Because it'll show on here, like in that particular case, District One, and I really think that's District Six, okay? Uh, and, and that, that means a lot to us, because we as council people like to handle the situations within our own district. So, I, I mean, but at one point, this might have been District One, but I think it's District Six now. Of like, never, it never was District One.
It was District Two.
Again, we, that, that's just something else that we just kind of need to clean up, Tom, is, is all I'm trying to say.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Chris, you have something?
I do, if I may, and that is of no error on Tom's part. So what we do utilize is the latest and greatest.
Okay.
Um, GIS mapping, and the system, my, my permit now system, it automatically generates the, um, districts, which I believe they also utilize that same system. So, what we do do though, is this information is provided to the council at least thirty to forty-five days prior to this meeting, so I'm gonna ask that if we have any district errors on the documentation that you're receiving at that time, just let us know, and then we'll make that correction prior to the hearing.
Good point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Diana. Uh, Mr. Hamner?
Yeah, I apologize for, uh, yeah, it said District One, and I was waiting on, for item O on the back, uh, on the next page, which is, says District Six, but districts, that's Crozier. Who's Crozier? So I don't know how that happened either.
There's several of them. Um, yeah. And also from this, this, this side, uh, in our fairness, sometimes we have so much information here, and we look at the districts, and then it doesn't catch our eye until it actually gets it, because we reading what we are actually, the information that's in front of us. Next item, please. L?
L.
Uh, uh, L. Forty-six twenty-seven, Highway twenty-four.
Okay, um, this is a property that we were unable to make service on. Uh, it is the recommendation that, uh, that, uh, this matter be rescheduled and that an attorney ad hoc be appointed to represent the interest of the absentee property owner.
Staff concurs with South Central Planning.
Motion, a motion by, uh, Mr. Trust Clair, second by Mr. Champagne, um, to concur with administration. Uh, Steve?
Chris?
Yes.
Uh, question. In all the previous condemnation hearings we've had, okay, we've had many of them that we didn't have contact, and they weren't assigned, uh, ad hoc. Okay, and we went ahead and, and moved, and moved on them at that point. Were we doing something illegal or that shouldn't been done? Why are we postponing these things now, and we never done it before?
No, we've had, we've had several that we were unable to.
Right, we've had several, we've had never made up, but we, we still made decisions on them that night. We didn't, we didn't hold them over to the next, to the next, uh, meetings.
Well, maybe we're confusing the terminology, but Brianna, I know that we've had some that were continued.
Press it again.
But the majority of them were not.
Green light.
Just press it and wait. There you go, now just wait.
You should turn it off.
Okay, it's on now. Okay, yeah, anytime that we find an impediment with the service, we recommend to continue it to y'all, um, whenever I do the title research. So I think that, um, he's just saying it a different way than the way that I say it, but it's the same thing. So occasionally, um, whenever we're going through the regular roll call of them, um, Camilla or Dion will say, um, that it's the recommendation to continue because we didn't get proper service, and we just don't really go into the detail of it, but, um, that's what happens. We have a couple of them every single time that we do this. So that's what we do.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Members vote your machine. Eight zero, motion passed. Next item, M?
Item M is eight oh four Greenwich Street. Uh, this is, uh, an appointment attorney ad hoc matter, and, uh, the owners have arrived. Uh, it is the, uh, this matter is initiated in April of two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, the last inspection, April tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, uh, uh, shows that there's a recommendation of the certified building official in South Central Planning, this property be condemned, and that the owner have until, uh, May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, uh, to repair or demolish the structure.
Uh, sorry, staff concurs with, uh, South Central Planning's recommendation.
Uh, yes, ma'am, could you, state your name and address? You can put the, the mic down.
My name is Gwendolyn Lappers. I live at four oh four Christopher Drive. They are working with Restore, Louisiana Restore, to get this house, to get my mom's house fixed. Um, they waiting on contractors right now.
My name's Nikki Chostrier, eight oh four Greenwich Street. Um, we've been working with Louisiana Restore since the storm, because we were denied from FEMA due to the home still being in my late grandmother's name. We've been working with them ever since. We've done the part where they came out, test the home, they tested soil, like, all kind of craziness. Um, and now we're at the process where she's telling us, we're just waiting on actual state contractors to come out to see as far as an actual number, dollar sign of what it would be to restore, or what our next process would be. She said we are on a list to have someone come out. Um, she did state last month, when I spoke to her in March, that is a pretty lengthy list. It's at will, because we didn't have the money to pay for a contractor, and then they refund us. So we are on the list for a state contractor to come out and fix the home for us.
Mr. Champagne?
Yeah, I was just wondering, did y'all have any documentation from Restore that you could provide to?
I have this that I actually sent to Ms. Brown and emailed her back the first time anything occurred, and she had it in her chart. I spoke with her this morning again, and she said to just bring this and bring it with us today, because it does have our, um, caseworkers name and her contact folder on it.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, the parachute documentation of that, okay?
Okay, um, I have a few other, um, properties like this in my district that I'm dealing with. Uh, one specifically that's gonna be on here tonight as well. Um, and I do understand what you, what you guys are saying, so with that, I feel comfortable with concurring with administration. Uh, condemning, well, I'd like to condemn, but extend for ninety days to the July fifteenth, because hopefully by then, Restore should contact you, and I'll give you my contact information that you can call me, because they're gonna request, they're gonna find it, once they do the property search or legal search or whatever it is for the property, they'll see the condemnation. And at that point, you can contact me, and I can rescind that condemnation, so they can move forward in what they're gonna do for you guys.
And I've been trying to contact her since my uncle actually got the paper and the mail to come tonight. I'm, to the point where she could probably get me on harassment charges, honestly.
Gotcha.
Uh, I've called her, left messages and everything. She hasn't contacted me back, but like I said, she does reach out about once a month. Just, hey, is everything still the same? Yes, ma'am, and that's pretty much all we got for her.
All right, uh, again, my motion is to, uh, condemn, but extend for ninety days to July fifteenth.
Thank you.
Uh, it's a motion by, uh, Mr., Mr. Pleasure, and second by Mr. Babbin to, uh, condemn and extend, uh, for ninety days. Uh, members vote your machine? Motion passes eight zero. You have ninety days, uh, and hopefully we, uh, we can look forward to it. Are you Harry's relatives?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I'm his daughter.
They're the, um, the, I'm, I'm a granddaughter. I've just been taking care, we were living in the home at the time of the storm.
Okay, yeah, and, um, thank you very much. My colleagues also, if you read, uh, that is District, uh, One, not District Two. Uh, next item, please?
Next item is N, uh, address is thirty-six twenty-six End Street. Um, this is a property where we do not have service on the property owner. Uh, and as a result, I would recommend to the council that this matter be rescheduled to July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty.
Hello?
All right, uh. All right, uh, this is a good example of us not getting the green cards back, but they're getting them. The postal service just isn't sending them timely. Nonetheless, uh, it is recommended, uh, that in conjunction with our inspector's report dated April, last one, April tenth, two thousand twenty-five, that this property be condemned, uh, and, uh, that the property owner be given, uh, thirty days till May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five to repair or demolish. to repair or demolish the structure.
Staff concurs with South Central Planning recommendation.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm the owner of the property. Uh, actually, I was there the other day when Mr. Bertrand.
Excuse me, name and address, please.
Uh, Raymond Bro, one fourteen St. Louis Street, Houma. Uh, I was at the property the other day when I met Mr. Bertrand come and took his updated pictures. And, uh, this, the building right there, that was, what was in question, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, well, it's gone. I got pictures right here.
Okay. Want you to explain that to him?
Press the light, uh, let's figure.
Uh, Charles. Charles Bertrand, uh, when I went out there the other day, the, uh, applicants had, uh, multiple skid steers. They had equipment, they had trucks with trailers, uh, they were cleaning up the property. And like I told them at the time, and I do have pictures of that, so that you guys do know on the tenth, I've got pictures of all these properties on my iPad. So I apologize they didn't get in earlier, but in the future, if you need them, I have them all on my iPad. But on the day I was there, they had equipment, they had skid steers, they had trucks, they had chainsaws. Uh, they were cleaning this property up. Uh, they didn't have the building down at the time when I took the picture, but they assured me that building would be down that day. Uh, and I could tell them, I said, just come into the, uh, council meeting, uh, you know, state your case, tell them what you're doing.
Excuse me, sir.
Yeah.
Do you have a picture?
Yes, sir.
Could you bring it to me?
Yeah.
Um, I have, um, Mr. Amity before I have you. Could y'all take care of this for me?
I think we were gonna do the same thing. So, but I wanna check with Chris first. Um, so looking at the picture that he shows us, the building's down, was there anything more, uh, Mr. Watkins or Chris that you know of that needed to be done on the site? Sounds like they cleaned it up. So for me, I, I would make a motion that the case be closed. So that'll be my motion.
Motion by Mr. Amity, second by Mr. Trusculler, that, um, that we actually, um, close the case.
Thank you.
Members' voting machine? Eight, eight-zero. You're good. Mr. Trusculler?
Okay, once again. Mr. Bertrand.
Yes, sir.
Went out on the tenth or whatever, took pictures, saw progress being made, and nobody else knew about it. I mean, this, this could have been resolved when Mr., with Mr. Watkins saying that it should be cleared up. You know, it should have been closed. I mean, we made these guys, yes, it could have.
Well, no, no, no.
You could have made a recommendation. If we, if y'all would have known, if y'all had communicated between yourselves and this thing was done, he could have went back the next day because the guy assured him it would be gone that day. He could have went back the next day and took pictures, proved that it was done, and then it, it would have been, your recommendation would have been to close the file. There's no reason, there's no communication. I mean, he went on the tenth, today's the fifteenth, and the guy assured him it was gonna be done that day. He saw the equipment there, he saw the equi, that they were doing it. I mean, a, a, a return visit could eliminate a lot of grief to a lot of people.
So, uh, councilman, uh, yes, we could have gone out there and, uh, and, and take, you know, and found out if the, they had followed through and, and done their, you know, cleaned up with the property. But it doesn't remove it from the agenda. He still would have had it showing up.
Certainly not. You, 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 what, your recommendation would have been to close the file.
Yes, sir.
It would. That would have been your recommendation. You were recommending to condemn it before he got up and showed his picture. It could have been, it could have been solved before. Thank you.
Mr. Babbin?
Yeah, when did, when was this originated, this particular file?
May of two thousand twenty.
So it's been five years, okay? And then, and since the tenth to the day. And, and I agree with you, Steve, that, that it could have been handled that way, but this has been going on for five years too.
It's only been going on for ten days because even on the tenth, five days. If you didn't want the next day, it's been over.
You, you're absolutely right, but if the man would have cleaned it up five years ago, we wouldn't even have it on the agenda tonight.
Next, next, next item. Oh, did we vote?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, next item.
Uh, excuse me, the next item is, uh, one twenty-seven Crozier. Uh, this is an attorney ad hoc appointment matter. And, uh, uh, the, uh, last inspection was April tenth, uh, two thousand and, uh, twenty-five, uh, and pursuant to our certified building officials' report, uh, and, uh, information presented to the council is our recommendation that this property be condemned and that the owner be given thirty days until May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five to repair or demolish the structure.
Staff concurs with South Central Planning recommendation.
Uh, Mr. Alcock?
Uh, Courtney Yalcock, I was appointed ad hoc on one twenty-seven Crozier Drive. I, um, ran the whereabouts ads and sent out certified notices to, um, estate parties that I could find. I was able to make contact with the widow of Mr. Isaac Riley. And, um, also, um, made notice on the, uh, state of Louisiana because there's a community, uh, development block grant mortgage on the property. Um, she has no opposition to the, um, the condemnation. I don't think they have the capacity to, uh, to do the repair.
Motion to concur to administration?
Uh, it's been moved by, uh, Mr. Pleasure, second by Mr. Hamlin, that we concur with administration. Members' voting machine? Mm-hmm. Eight-zero. Next item.
Uh, the next item is three zero seven Cortez Street. Uh, this is a, a matter where we have failed to receive the green card. However, the, uh, U.S. Postal Service tracking system shows that it was delivered on March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. Uh, but we have no green card back. Uh, it is our recommendation and, and that traditionally that when this situation presents itself, uh, we, we do move forward, uh, with the, uh, with, you know, with the condemnation hearing, but I would defer to, uh, parish council as to how she wants to handle.
If it's been delivered, I concur with Tom, that we can proceed.
Uh, so, uh, it is the recommendation of the, of South Central Planning, our certified building official, that, uh, this structure, uh, uh, be condemned? Say again? Three oh seven.
Three oh seven Cortez.
Oh, the, the roof has been replaced?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So give your report to the, to the council.
Uh, council. Council, my name is Charles Bertrand, uh, uh, three oh seven.
Cortez.
Cortez, uh, the following condemnation inspection, the residential structure is in good shape. There's no utilities, uh, the roof has been repaired, all the eaves have been repaired. It looks like new windows and doors have been put into the house. There's a new roof on the house. It is my recommendation that the property be taken off the condemnation list.
Can we respectfully have a motion, please?
Turn my light on.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Amity.
All right. I spoke with the property owner about a month ago. Um, that was a situation where he couldn't get the permit because it was on the condemnation list. We got the permit done, he's gone in, he's changed the roof, he's done with Mr. Bertrand and spoke of. He's got the boxing ready to be vinyl'd in. And, uh, I'm gonna make a, well, so we're going with the recommendation that it be closed. Right, Mr. Tom?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, Pulaski concurs?
Yeah, well, yes, it looks like from the photos that were taken on April ninth that there, there's still some siding that needs to be, you know, replaced.
On one side, he told me he was gonna do that when he boxes in the.
But, I mean, siding is more of a property maintenance code anyway than, than a condemnation, it certainly.
Okay.
Um, so I would concur with the recommendation that the.
And I'll make a motion to concur with, um, South Central Planning and administration to close the file.
Uh, moved by Mr. Amity, second by Mr. Babbin, that, uh, did we concur, concur with administration, um, to close the file? Uh, members' voting machine? Eight-zero. Motion passed. Next, next item.
Next, next property is three fifteen Commerce Street. Uh, this is a property that the initial inspection was of July two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, we do have good service on the property owner. Uh, say again? Yeah, there we go. Uh, uh, the, it's our recommendation to the parish council that in conjunction with the building officials', uh, inspection report, uh, that, and the pictures shown before the council that this property be condemned and that the owner have until, uh, May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five to repair or demolish the structure. And, and confirm that that is your latest report, please.
Go ahead.
Uh, yes, council, uh, on the tenth, I did an inspection for three fifteen Commerce Street. Uh, the structure has no mailbox, most of the windows are broken out at this time. It appears that the homeless people are living in this structure. The front door is missing and allows access to the public. The structure has open windows, the entire property is a harbor for pests and endanger. It is my recommendation that the property be condemned.
Staff concurs with the recommendation.
Okay. State your name and address, please, ma'am.
Jacqueline Westbrook reside at one forty Stovall Street, Houma, seven zero three six four. That property, we had gathered all of the, um, supplies for renovating it. My brother acquired that property from a tax deed sale. Um, at the time, we actually went in and gutted the property out. We got in the listing of everything that was needed in order to get the permit and to have the contractors go in and renovate it. Structure is fine. Um, windows continue to be busted out every time we replace them. The kids in the neighborhood bust the windows out again. Same thing for the door in the front that he's talking about. That's actual lower section was a garage, the upper section was housing. And my brother actually, the fall he endured was partially the reason that he lost his life. Uh, he died, he succumbed to some of the injuries, he became quadriplegic. While we were, you know, doing some of the guiding, getting that house ready for renovation in order to obtain a permit. And so, um, I've actually had properties renovated in conditions a whole lot worse than that. And so it is my intention, being that all of the materials that we had purchased were stolen out of there. Um, I've spoken to someone to try and get grants. Uh, I've got electrician on standby. Some of the repairs I can do myself, but I am requesting of you that you allow me to renovate this property and not condemn it. If not for anything other than selling me on a purpose.
Mr. Pleasure?
Okay, thank you, um, Chair. Couple of questions for you, Ms., uh, Westbrook, right? Um, how long you think, estimated it would take you to, um, do, you know, the renovations on this property since you did say that, um, you've done them before? So I guess you probably have a good sense of that.
Well, the holdup at this point would be finances. I have finances where I can get some of the work done. I can start as soon as I can get a permit. I was holding off until this meeting tonight, however. I did speak to someone in permits department and they're requesting the same thing as before, um, to get a listing of the materials that it's gonna require to bring the structure back up. It's gonna take a process, it would have to be done in intervals. So I can't actually give you a timeframe of when it will be fully reconstructed, but I can say that as soon as I can get the permit, I can begin working on the structure.
Okay, in, uh, in fairness, um, what I'll do is, um, I'll make a motion to condemn, but give you ninety days extension, July fifteenth, to, um, show some substantial completion or at least in, uh, uh, effort of trying to do something with the, uh, with the property.
Thank you.
So that's my motion to, um, extend or condemn, but extend to July fifteenth.
Uh, a motion by Mr. Pleasure, second, uh, by Mrs. Champagne, uh, to, uh, condemn, um, and extend to ninety days, extend the condemnation, uh.
Um, question, I need to bring something to your attention too. I know you have speaker's card, but I've got a little emergency going on.
Members' voting machine?
I can, um, I have a property, you're my.
No, I'm, I'm, go ahead, I, I.
Crozier, uh, Crozier Drive?
Yes.
Who's the councilperson in that area?
I am.
You are, okay. I called Drainage Department several times.
Okay, now the thing is, we can't address any drainage issues or any other issues other than what's on the agenda.
Is there a specific meeting for that or?
Well, you would have to call, if it's drainage, from what I heard, you have to call the Drainage Department.
I called them twice and I'm still flooding.
Okay, you have my phone number, I'm sure?
I do.
Give me a call.
Thank you.
All righty.
Next item, please.
Next item is one sixteen Cairo Court. Uh, initial inspection this matter was February ninth of two thousand and twenty-five. Uh, it is the recommendation of council, uh, of, of South Central Planning that, uh, in conjunction with the inspector's report. Uh, go ahead, give me your last report.
Uh, Charles Bertrand, uh, when I did the inspection on four-ten, the structure, uh, the, all the walls have been taken down. Uh, basically what you have there is just the floor, but most of the building material is either stacked up or it's still on the property at some point and the floor is still there. My recommendation is to continue to keep it on the condemnation list until the property is completely cleaned up.
So, uh, I, I would say this, we recommend that it be condemned, but that the owner be given till, uh, July fourteenth or July fifteenth, as the case may be, uh, to complete the.
The demolition of the structure. Extend to the next condemnation hearing, if you, if you actually progress.
Uh, yes, uh, our rec, recommendation would be to concur to condemn it and then give them until July fifteenth to remove it. So the debris, when it's like that, if they fail to comply within the specified date, even though it's been taken down, we can still remove the debris through the condemnation process.
Uh, yes, there's this lady here, that has. Yes, ma'am, state your name and address.
Yes, I'm Nadine Bernard Hammons. I'm one of the independent co-administrators of the estate of Bryce Bernard. Uh, Randy Bernard is my brother and I believe he's been in contact with Mr. Pulaski and several others. Um, he does intend to go in later this week or maybe early next week to get the permit extended. Um, they are working on it at this moment and probably the flooring will be removed as of this evening. So all the floors should be removed and the debris, they are hauling off as they go. So, um, it is my anticipation that this whole project will be completed well in advance of July fourteenth or fifteenth.
Mr. Champagne?
Yeah, I, I spoke to Randy a couple of times and yes, uh, he, he, he sent me the pictures of the, the progress and, uh, I think, uh, con, condemning and concurring with, uh, administration, uh, and giving them the time to clean up the property, uh, by July would be great, so.
Uh, a motion by, uh, Mr. Champagne, second by, uh, Mr. Amity, that we concur with. Uh, a motion by uh, Mrs. Champagne, second by uh, Mr. Amadi that we concur with the Administration uh, to condemn and extend to Jan- uh, July fifteenth, the next condemnation hearing. Members of your machine? Yeah, uh, eight zero, motion passed. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Next item?
Next item i- is S, right? Uh, one hundred, we're on S, one hundred Billiat Court. Uh, this is a, a dual, a potential dual property owner issue. Uh, Ms. Courtney Alcock uh, was appointed ad hoc to represent one of the uh, absent, it's an estate. Um, there's also another two owners at issue, one Harry S. Burr Corporation and Mr. Matt Verrett. We do have proper service. I do believe counsel for Harry Burr Corp. All right, the owners have arrived. Uh, and Harry S. Burr Corporation's counsel's here. Um, at any rate, uh, it is uh, our the opinion of South Central Planning that in conjunction with the evidence submitted to the council, in conjunction with the report of our sort of a building official, that this property be condemned and that the owner or owner, owners have uh, uh, thirty days till May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five to repair or demolish the structure.
Staff concurs with the recommendation.
Okay, state your name and address, please.
Matt Verrett. I currently live at sixty-five twenty Strumpers Row.
Uh, would you have to say on your own ba- uh, on your, go ahead.
And the property resident is one hundred Billiat Court.
You wanna talk to him?
Yeah.
But, but what is your intention to do with the property?
To fix it.
Okay, I mean, ha- have you, have you secured a permit to do it?
Yes.
You, you do have a permit?
Correct.
Chris is at, um, and I, it's not that I don't believe you. I always, we always ask staff if they, if they have a permit available. Cause it, it's gonna make a decision on what, what I do, what I would recommend, rather. There is a.
Yes, sir. Issued April second.
Okay. How long do you think it's gonna take you to, to uh, to get this up to, to code?
We have some updated pictures right here of it, if y'all would like to see.
No, yeah, I, I know, I believe it, but how, how long do you think it would take you? It, I mean, listen, they recommended to condemn it and I don't have a problem with condemning it and giving you the ninety days. And then like we did on a number of others tonight, once you showed a good faith, then that's gonna go away in ninety days, okay? It's not our intention to tear this down. We don't, we don't want that to happen, but we have to, we, we can't allow it not to be done, is what I'm saying. So you think you can do some substantial work in ninety days? I mean, I, I'm somebody from the Burg, the, the legal council, if you, if you'd like to come up and.
Yes, I think we could do substantial work in ninety days.
Ma'am?
My name's April Tronha. I am at the Duval Law Firm. My address is one oh one Wilson Avenue. Um, I represent Harry Burr Corporation. In two thousand twenty-one, I filed an eviction against the estate and also Matt Verrett for failure to pay rent. There was a slight encroachment onto Harry Burr property. I have a judgment that grants me permission or Harry Burr permission to tear down the back half of the structure. I had an ad hoc appointed, Mr. Verrett voided service. I was able to get it on his grandfather, Lauren Reschardts. And um, so I have a valid judgment that permits me to tear down the rear of the structure. My client has obviously not wanted to tear down half of a structure and s- fully supports the condemnation of this um, structure completely.
Okay, I, I'm gonna ask our legal to jump in on this one, okay? Yeah, I, I like to see the pictures too, uh, since you had them.
Am I on?
Yes.
Okay, so all that the parish can worry about, as all of you know, is that all of the property owners are noticed. Since this building crosses over a property line, we just have to make sure that both sets of property owners are noticed, which Tom, I'm sure.
We have, we have service and the prop- and one of the owners is here, Burg is here and the estate is represented by Mr. Alcock.
Anything beyond that, um, we have, you know, procedurally, we can move forward with a condemnation. It is the council's, at the council's discretion with information.
Here again, you see the reason I'm asking the question because we have two property owners and one piece of property. And one is saying we want half of it torn down and the other one is saying we wanna leave the whole thing up and do it. This is, this literally is the first time I've ever had one, that it covers two pieces of property or two different owners, I should say. And the fact that it's in some type of litigation.
It, it is past litigation. I have judgments granting me permission to tear down the rear half of the structure. Um, this is a survey map by Mr. Kenneth Rembert that will illustrate the extent that the structure is over onto this property line, which would also take the entire rear of the structure and the front corner of the front structure. I believe upon information and belief that some grant was obtained post Hurricane Katrina that permitted the structure to be raised and extended further onto my client's property without permission.
Excuse me. Yes, ma'am.
So the structure is condemnable. Um, as I was saying, it does not really matter which side the building is on, as long as both owners of the structure were noticed properly, we can proceed with anything we need to do for condemnation purposes. Um, and like I said, that's uh, you know, if you want to proceed in an abundance of caution and give, you know, a little bit of time or proceed with a condemnation with thirty days.
But, but my, my problem with the legal aspect of it is, can we condemn, Chris, I'm gonna ask this, and, and Mr. Watkins, can we condemn half of a home? All right, and then, and then extend the other ninety days. Uh, that sounds ridiculous, but I mean, it, that's where we are here.
So it's, so it's, you have three owners, all have been notified. Uh, and, and so I, my, my response is yes. All the owners have been notified. You can condemn the, the entire structure, including the one third or quarter that's on the Harry Burr Corporation. Uh, they're not gonna have a problem with it. So I, to answer your question, Mr. Babbin, yes, you, you can condemn it and if necessary have it to all torn down.
But, but, but my question also is, can we condemn it and ta- say the back portion be torn down on the Harry Burr's property and give the front portion ninety days to comply with, with a permit? Is, is what I mean. Again, I, I, I'm searching for answers here because I've never had this before.
So I would have to see the way that the parcels are laid out, the way that you notice them, but I would think that, so the condemnation is against the structure itself, not the land, so the structure comes down as one, is what I would.
Yeah, you'd have to, you would, but there's some ownership issues, but from a condemnation perspective only.
Okay.
You can condemn the, the, the structure.
All right, well then, then I'm gonna make a recommendation to condemn the structure and give ninety days and hopefully they can work that situation out, okay? It doesn't seem like it's been able to be worked out so far, but I'm, I'm willing to go that further because it looks like something that could be repaired, okay? So again, my recommendation is to condemn, but to give ninety days to, to show some proof of reconciliation between the two property owners or the two individuals involved and we go from there. Uh, now, Mr. Babbin has made a motion, um, uh, entertaining this second and I thi- okay. And, okay, Mr. Babbin has made a motion to uh, condemn the structure and extend for ninety days.
Ninety days, correct.
All right, now. And second by Mr.?
Amadi.
Amadi. Yeah, cause I was gonna have some discussion after, after we made the motion, so. Uh, and Mr. Champagne had something before you. Press your light, Mr. Vazan.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I guess, just for clarity, if we condemn and then the attorney for Harry Burr are gonna continue with litigation, that has no bearing on. Yeah, so she has judgment, so there's no bearing on that, right? So that's whatever happens after we condemn is in the court or in their, in their decision, right?
Yes, all that we can speak to legally today, as far as TPCG is concerned, is that proper condemnation procedures were followed. Um, beyond that liability, anything else that happens with that building, that's between the parties themselves and a civil matter.
Uh, Mr. Vazan?
Yeah, all I was saying, I, I'd like to hear what Mr. Ver- Mr. Red looked like he was trying to speak and uh, and I'll just pose the question, being you gonna speak, is if you can speak to your intentions, if it's not condemned and you remodel, is your intentions to correct the boundary issue?
Oh, she had said that we extended the property over due to the matter before Katrina. My grandmother is the one who actually built the home and she's never extended it. The only thing that's been added to the trailer was actually the elevator. That's the only extension to the home. It's been like that since before I was a kid, thirty-five years. It's been in the same place. My grandma built this home. She got a mo- mobile home and then she extended it to the side, you know, wind the trailer up. And she did add an addition. I remember when I was a kid, my grandma was paying twenty-five dollars a year for a little piece. She told me, cause her shed was on the property. Over the years, the Harry Burr's have encroached on the house. Cause back then, why was they accepting the twenty-five dollars and it was a very, I think it was fifteen foot of the back section of the home and her little shed for twenty-five dollars.
So, and, and that's all I wanted to know, like, it's already been ruled on? From what I understand, you know what's been ruled on? No? Well, I, I was just curious if that's what you wanted to speak on, so uh, Mr. Babbin's made a motion, so we just gonna proceed now unless you got something else to say.
And again, from, from the condemnation standpoint, I, uh, we have to lean to what our attorney recommends us to do. What I'm hoping in this situation is that Mr. Verrett and the Burr Corporation could come to some kind of resolve at the end of this. And I'm not saying it's gonna happen, but I'm willing to give ninety days for that to try to happen, okay? And if it doesn't, then it's, it's gonna come down.
Yeah.
Okay?
And another thing is, since we're trying to repair it and they're trying to tear it down, the part that falls on their property that they don't want there, we're willing to repair, shouldn't they be responsible for the?
I, I'm not a lawyer and we can't address that tonight. My recommendation to you is to speak with the attorney who represents the Burr Corporation and, and go from there. That, that is completely out of our purview, okay? We're trying, I'm trying to help you here by giving you ninety days.
And I was just trying to get some.
Sure, sure. But again, we can't give, nor can our, our uh, attorneys give you legal uh, advice here tonight. But I'm just telling you as an individual who's not an attorney, I would sit down with the other party and try to work this out. All right? Thank you. And I, I, I'm gonna say also, we're trying to help out uh, in every way possible and I agree, we only have to deal with the structure itself. Uh, that's the nature of the beast that we have before us right now. The, the, now we have a, a motion by Mr. Babbin, second by Mr. Amadi that we would actually condemn and extend for ninety days. Members of your machine? Eight zero, motion passed. Next item?
Uh, next item is uh, T thirty-one eighty Bayou de Large Road. Uh, this is a matter uh, where we do not have proper service. We have no green card back. Uh, it appears that there is no representative uh, discussed ownership or speak on behalf of the, of the identified owners. Uh, is our recommendation that uh, this matter be rescheduled to July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five and that an attorney at Hawk be appointed to represent the absentee uh, property owner. Chris?
Uh, staff concurs with the recommendation.
Mr. Babbin? Yeah, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make the motion to uh, naturally from a legal standpoint to concur with Administration. This has been a problem on Bayou de Large for a lot of years, okay? And if y'all don't know the people that own it, I do know the people that own it, okay? And we'll talk about that after the meeting, cause I'm not gonna divulge something like that on there. But this is, this is definitely an eyesore and has to be taken care of. Motion by Mr. Babbin?
Second.
Uh, second by Mr. Amadi that uh, we concur with Administration. Members of your machine? Eight zero, next item?
Next item is uh, five one five Antoine Street. This unfortunately is another matter where we do not have service on the uh, property owners and the property owners here. Uh, in conjunction with our certified building official, uh, it is recommendation that uh, that the property be condemned, uh, and that the owner be given thirty days to repair or demolish the structure.
Uh, Chris?
Staff concurs with the recommendation.
Uh, state your name and uh, address, sir?
My name is Robert Robledo, Roberto Robledo, live in five fifteen Antoine. Yeah, I, I own that property, but I live in Monahue. And uh, I don't know if you remember sometime back, I re- I rebuilt it. I spent three thousand dollars on that house and my boy came out of jail and put his partners in there and messed it all up and then I moved to Monahue from there and, and uh, bent, the people vandalized it and stuff. But I got all of my things to put it back together and my boy don't wanna do nothing to help me, so. I got, I got all the rafters, I got all the decking, I got all the two by fours and I got, I got a generator and everything else to put it back together again. If you give me ninety days, that, you can go look at it and it'll be put back together. Cause I, I'm tired of taking care of my boy and that's my property and I can't, I can't uh, I can't take care of him no more. I had enough of that.
Um, before Mr. um, Mr. Pleasure speak, can I ask you a question, sir? Mr. Roberto? Mr. Roberto, can I ask you a question? Oh, okay then. I passed by that and we had uh, an issue with this piece of property, uh, I recall some time back.
Yeah.
And the conditions that I saw today was really, with the exception of you tearing down one house, haven't made that much progress. And I can honestly said to you, to your face, that I cannot make this motion, but this, this gentleman right here is gonna make this motion for me.
Yes, sir, I understand.
Extent of it, that we can actually go to give you the best possible scenario that we can give you. And we would hope that you get some permits to actually take care what you need to take care of. But the last time you were, you were here, I was not in this position, sir. And we wanted you to take in consideration your ability to actually to make the repairs. So we don't want you, I don't want you to spend some money and you cannot reach that point. And that's the decision that I want you to make before this gentleman speaks on my behalf because of the chair that I sit in. Can you do something within ninety days?
Yes, sir, I can. I appreciate that gave me ninety days, cause I, I have all the material already.
Have you considered?
To do that.
Have you considered a permit? Have you?
I have to go get me a permit. I, I, I will get me a permit if I have to. Where do I get that at?
The permit office.
And you have to go to the, the permit office and, and you have to get the permit to actually do the work.
Yes, sir.
Right. And uh, right now, Mr. Pleasure?
I make a motion that we um, extend for ninety days. We condemn, but we extend it for ninety days until July fifteenth, next condemnation hearing. And Chris, if we can provide him with an address or phone number, thanks.
Motion by Mr. uh, Pleasure, second by Mr. Babbin, that we uh, condemn, but uh, extend for ninety days. Um, members of your machine?
Cause I, I, I don't, I didn't put three thousand dollars in that house and my boy ruined it.
He's gonna give, he's gonna give you what you need right there to go get your permit.
I do appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Motion passed.
Thanks.
Next item, please.
Uh, final item is V uh, one zero seven Alex Lane. This is an ad hoc appointment matter. Uh, Ms. Courtney Alcock is the uh, appointed attorney. Um, it is.
Oh, you can sit down. They're gonna give you a card with the address.
Oh, thank you.
What you give your report. Uh, I'd like the inspector to give his report.
Uh, Charles Bertrand. Uh, this is a condemnation inspection. The structure is derelict. Uh, at this time, the. Uh, at this time, the, um, mobile home is completely tore down, but, uh, with the pictures that I have, you're gonna see that the property is not completely cleaned up. When they tore the mobile home down, they left multiple piles of the mobile home on the property. So what I recommend is to keep it on the condemnation list until the property is completely cleaned up, uh, and then at that time we could take it off. And I have pictures, if you wanna look at them, from the tenth, when I looked, when I did the inspection.
You still condemn it so that we can, if we have to, we can remove the debris? Otherwise, we're gonna start a whole junk and trash file.
So in conjunction with the, uh, our inspector's report and, uh, uh, updated pictures, it is recommendation that, uh, this property be condemned and that the owner have, you know, thirty days to complete the removal of the debris, uh, connected with the trailer.
Ms. Alcock?
Uh, Courtney Alcock, I was appointed, uh, ad hoc on this matter. Um, and this is the estate of Mary Stovall Taylor. I ran a whereabouts ad and, um, did some research and sent out a few letters. Uh, at least one of my letters was received. I haven't had any contact with the owners, but apparently they are trying to clear the property.
Mr. Babbin? Yeah, asked for a conversation with councilwoman, uh, Ms. Chauvin. Uh, I concur with, uh, staff and condemn and give them thirty days. Uh, the motion by Mr. Babbin, second by, um, Mr. Amadi, that we concur with administration, uh, to maintain the con- uh, condemnation and, and extend for thirty days. Or condemn and, and, and condemn and give them. Condemn and, and give them thirty days. Could you put that picture back up there for me, please? Before we, uh, and I know we're going home. Uh, see that picture up there? It says one seven twenty, twenty-five. We gotta work that out, 'cause that's what we're all going on up here, that's what we're saying. We could just turn all these screens off. Uh, members voting machine? Uh, eight zero, motion passed.
Motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned by Mr. Babbin, second by Mr. Amadi, uh, members voting machine? Uh, we are adjourned, eight zero.